valued at about two point five million dollars. And we've had discussions with, you know, again, where we reported with our external auditors, Malin Jenkins, and it is current period revenue that we are reporting. And it is appropriately recorded in the fiscal year. Again, the derived income taxes, uh, to in- income tax revenue is earned by us when the underlying exchange has occurred. And the underlying exchange here would be when the business receives and reports the the revenue, the receipts. So again, the city utilizes a current financial resources measurement focus and the modified accrual basis of accounting. This means that the revenues are recognized as soon as they are both measurable and available, both measurable and available. Revenues are considered available to us when they are collectible within the current period or soon thereafter to pay the liabilities of the current period. And for this purpose, the consolidated government considers taxes as available in the period in which they are levied if they are collected within sixty days of the current fiscal year, ninety days in terms of all other governmental revenues. Certain tax, certain revenues such as property taxes, sales taxes, licenses, interest revenue and charges for services associated with the current fiscal period are all considered to be susceptible to accrual and are recognized as revenues of the current fiscal period if available criteria are met. And that language is also in our CAFRA. In addition, accrued revenue would be recorded as receivable, which is an asset, not a liability on the financial statements if it is accrued revenue. And the, a purpose of the Lot Box spreadsheet is so that the staff can track the payments remitted and deposited into the city's account by customer account number. This again allows staff to process those licenses all time, over time, because we're not able to process the, the mail, uh, all on the same day. Again, face-to-face interactions are a priority for us. And so it's part of the reason why we have Lot Box so that we can get, but we can process those that are, that are not directly in front of us at some later point in time. So there was the recommendation to develop an action plan to address the backlog transactions. An action plan was provided in the executive summary report of dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. However, staff are still currently, um, working through the license renewal and delinquent license process. There's revenue staff, there's inspections and codes staff. Temporary staffing has been authorized by the city manager and to assist with the backlog of the license process. Staff will continue to work overtime to complete the license renewals. And our information technology and finance will continue engagement with the vendor to address these performance issues in order to move forward with some of that automation that we were expecting to include online processing. So there was a recommendation to send out renewal notices annually. And I'm just again saying that the renewal notices are mailed is the courtesy delinquent letters that were not mailed out this, uh, for the couple of years prior that were subsequently sent out this year. And this would include businesses who did not respond to a problem letter. And if a business does not come into compliance, subsequent, uh, delinquent list is generated for code enforcement. Recommendation of resuming citation enforcement for known delinquent accounts. As far as I know, code enforcement has not been discontinued. That lies within the responsibilities of the inspections and codes department. They've received a delinquents, uh, business license list in September, and they are currently working to that end and will hopefully finish up with that particular list by December thirty-first. So it is the recommendation that write-offs of age receivables and other collectibles take place, ensuring accurate, more accurate financial reporting. Again, we do write-offs for ambulance, uh, that was occur every month. And for various reasons, of course, as listed here, um, again, it's a policy decision to whether or not we physically close out, um, those receivables in the system, because once it's closed out in the system, it cannot be reopened if we receive subsequent payment. You know, I, I just wanted to also reflect that the ambulance receivables are not overstated as approximately seventy percent of the ambulance receivable balance has been written off as bad debt and reflected in the figure that we report as an allowance for doubtful accounts in the financial statement. That, that's really ambulance receivable and those loan receivables. There is no receivable for the ambulance or loans that's on the book dated prior to July first of twenty twenty that has not already been expensed as bad debt. And I think lastly here, um, it was, um, um, in reference to the ambulance receivable and closing of that, again, that wouldn't, that would have no impact to the financial statements because the allowance currently reduces than that amount. So we're not overstating the financials because the receivable is on the books, but so is the allowance and those two net out to a number, a positive number and a negative number, netting out to a new number. But nevertheless, we can most certainly revisit this policy, particularly closing those receivables. We will be revisiting this policy as we, um, work through and the, and bring forth the council options in reference to the ambulance billing RFP, um, at some point in January. That, Mr. Mayor, concludes that presentation.
Okay, Counselor.
Davis, hang on, let me get to you. There you go.
Yes, Director Alexander, um, business license renewals this year, how many of those have been mailed out, the renewals been mailed out this year?
Mailed out? I do not know the specific number of what's been mailed, but I would say thousands.
How many would you have? How many accounts are there that you would need to mail out?
Anywhere between six to eight thousand.
It's not more than that. Seems like a small amount.
Well, I mean, it fluctuates on an annual basis depending on what businesses are open.
No, it should increase because this town's growing.
Well, we do have businesses that close.
Uh, that wouldn't add up to the amount of growth we've had.
I mean, it just, it fluctuates on an annual basis.
All right, I'm gonna write that down as you don't know. Okay, um, I just want to let the record reflect here that, um, all the comments that were just recently made and in the audit's response has all taken after this council has initiated the audit and investigation. Any action plan that's been implemented recently has all happened after this council has initiated an audit and an investigation into the revenue department. I want to make that clear, and that's for the record. The, um, the other thing is that we talked about COVID. That's been brought up before. If you go back and look at the records since COVID, COVID was probably one of your best collection years out there. And since then, it's gotten progressively worse and has snowballed to this is probably one of your worst years. And that's a concern that I have in my mind is how did it get to that point? And why does it continuously grow to that point? Another point I want to make for the record is just recently, September thirteenth. September thirteenth, codes inspection was given a list and told to go out and aggressively collect delinquencies of businesses after a month, almost over a month after the audit and the investigation took place. I also want to ask that whoever can make this happen, but I'd like to get also, we asked about having Malin Jenkins in here next week. I'd also like to get Tyler Technologies in here because I think we need to talk about the software that's in place and how that works. And is it, i- if it's, uh, uh, if it's modern enough, automated enough to, to, uh, be sufficient even without the upgrades? I want to know, I want to have a, a, uh, report as to the impact that it has in other communities, because I'm sure they're using the same software and the same setup in those communities. I want to know if they've had any trouble spots or, or hardships in those areas. It, it, you know, when I, when I look at this, I don't see, we, we talked about continuous improvement. I don't see continuous improvement. I see a failure that's now all of a sudden attempting to be addressed. Okay? And we're gonna have to do that. There, there's no getting around that. We got to deal with that issue of fixing things. We're not there yet, but I think the information that's gathered, we still need to hear from the external auditor. External auditors are gonna have some findings and recommendations for us as well. And then when we get these reports, we can combine it to see what direction we need to But I want to thank everybody for, again, for their hard work and efforts that they put into it and, and providing necessary information and all that the council has requested to get to where we're at today. And, and hopefully we get through this thing and get back on a, a good course that, uh, that we can get the, the breakdowns in some of these areas fully functioning to, to appropriateness. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, can I make one additional comment? And there was something that came up in terms of stale checks, and I just want to make reference to with the, um, initiation of the audit and the investigation and so forth of the council. And one of the things that was done and provided to, um, the outside attorneys was a listing of the stale checks that we had catalogued in the office. At that time, it was, um, that we, what we found and identified was about a hundred and five stale checks that were identified in the office. Sixty-five percent of those, or roughly sixty-eight of those stale checks had been replaced. And so, you know, in terms of processes, you know, obviously, one of the things that we need to make sure that we do so that there's no appearance of that there's just checks laying around is have a better process, implement a better process in terms of how we handle those checks that may subsequently go stale. Because stale checks are really dependent on the maker. You have, I know on the city's checks, our checks say void after a hundred and eighty days, and a lot of people, a lot of organizations will have similar language on the check in terms of when you could deposit that check. But if it's, if it's not there, then the assumption is really that the check isn't stale. And in most cases I've seen, the bank will still deposit that check, which is why we had to put that on our checks as a city, that they were voidable after a certain date. And the last thing that I sort of want to make mention of is, um, there was an internal audit done in the finance department. You know, it's been sort of said out there that there wasn't any audit of the finance department done in recent years, and there was. Our retired auditor, John Redman, performed and presented an audit to counsel of the finance department in February of twenty seventeen.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thomas.
Uh, Ms. Alexander, I'm, I'm just curious, are you a CPA?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, that was just a curiosity question. One of the things that I am concerned about is that of the nine, um, audit recommendations that the internal auditor made to the department, it seems to me that, um, there's only one that you have said you'll consider, and that is one that we're already considering, the, uh, ambulance fees. I, I'm really concerned that with the in-depth audit that has been done and with the continued focus on the finance department and some of the problems that we as a council have been hearing about and trying to deal with. First of all, I, I was, I was very surprised to hear you say that you didn't have a chance to delve into the audit report with any specificity and you didn't, you didn't know some of the things that were in that. That's not a usual response when we have an audit of other departments or other groups that, um, that they have not taken a, a pretty close look at what the internal auditor has suggested, has said they found and so forth. I, I'm, I'm just very, very, very uncomfortable with the situation as it stands right now. And I'm hoping that because council has, um, tried to take a look at this and has tried to make sure that, uh, the finances of the city are in place, are properly being handled, will, will take more of a, a priority. We are beginning the budget process. As I recall, typically, uh, the, uh, department, uh, directors are, uh, requested to come to a meeting in January to present their budget request. And I'm hoping that some of the issues that are brought here that we are, you are saying to us, they're issues because I don't have the staff, will be addressed in that budget process. I also hope that if they are not addressed, you will come to the budget committee and make a, a, a request. At our last, uh, budget committee meetings, series of meetings, we had a, we had numerous people from the various judicial departments and, and in the, in the city come and tell us, we can't do our job without this, 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 and this, um, staff person. We had Parks and Rec come, was the only, as I recall, uh, it, there may have been another one, but Parks and Recs are the one that came and made a presentation to us. The council budget committee increased the budget or changed, add and delete by thirteen million dollars to make sure that our judicial, um, people had the money they needed to do their job. We didn't hear from you. And I, I don't want that to happen again. If you need staff, let us know that and let us know so that we can, we have, we have some money. We, I, I, I think the last I heard, we had about a hundred days in the ending balance. I'm not sure if that's still, uh, accurate, but, uh, as Counselor Davis, I think it was, said, uh, I'm willing to spend the money we need to spend in order to get a return on our money that's much larger than what we have spent. And I'm, I'm just real frustrated, uh, right now about this whole process. I hope that, um, you will take the internal audit report and you will go through it. And if you have questions, that you will, uh, contact the internal auditor. I believe that she will be more than glad to talk with you about that. I am concerned, as, again, as some of our counselors have said, is that we authorized this internal audit in July, and in your report, uh, time after time after time, you have said in August or September, you did something. Well, to me, those two, that's not a coincidence. I, I'm just, um, well, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, you will, um, make sure that the city of Columbus is collecting the money that we need to collect, that we are entitled to, that we have, um, procedures for, that the policies and requirements, as the city attorney read to you the policy, uh, that doesn't say, but somebody in the department or somebody in HR can, uh, ignore this. It says they will take the five days consecutive days off, and I expect that to happen from now on. I, I appreciate your, um, coming before us today and standing there and taking, uh, our questions and our concerns. I want to be sure, the last time I made such a speech as this, I was accused of being, um, rude and ugly and nasty to the person making the, uh, the presentation. I do not mean to be rude, ugly, or nasty to you, but I do need for you to understand and to hear my frustration, and I think that that is shared by some of the other counselors around the table. And, uh, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I'm just hoping that things are going to change and that we will not be back in this same position in another six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Alexander. All right, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We will get on with the business agenda. Let's, let's just do some of the, it's one column. We'll take a second, Mayor, while she collects those. I'm making it up. That's what I told me. I'll be glad, Mayor, you want to make a comment on that. The audit report that's being collected by the clerk will be made public, uh, probably in the next day or two. There's one particular column that'll be redacted that is confidential information, confidential tax information, amounts paid by taxpayers and businesses that state, state law protects, and it's not, not disclosable in any report. So with that, it'll be made public as soon as possible. All right, we'll move on to zoning, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first petition we've got up is property at forty seventy Macon Road. Owner is Benjamin Foster, going from single-family residential to, to neighborhood commercial. Uh, it's recommended for approval. And the proposed use on this one, Mr. Rempro, what is that?
Retail.
Retail?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is the petitioner here, Mr. Foster? All right, hang on just a minute, sir. We'll see if any questions around the table. Anybody got any? Okay, anybody in the audience want to speak for or against the petition? Don't see any hands, Mayor. Mr. Foster will bring that back at next week's meeting. That's a nine AM meeting next Tuesday for a vote. Thank you, sir. Next, next zoning hearing is property at thirty-nine fourteen, thirty-nine twenty-two, Buena Vista Road. This is Suria Estate Six LLC. I think Mr. Mize was here. Oh, Mr. Gibson is here now for the owner. This is going from neighborhood commercial to general commercial, recommended for approval. Are there any questions around the table?
No.
All right, anybody in the audience need to speak for or against? Okay, Mr. Gibson will vote on that also next week, nine o'clock on Tuesday, the twelfth. Got a request to delay item three, Mayor Protem.
My motion second to delay item three, any discussion?
Do you want that, do you want that brought back just whenever the fire officials say it's ready? A certain time?
First of the year. All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's delayed till first of the year.
All right, item four is first reading of an ordinance that would amend chapter eleven of the city code, revise, uh, criteria for promotional eligibility and procedures for firing EMS.
Counselor Thomas.
Um, I see that the Assistant Chief is in the back of the room. Could you come up and just give us a, an overview of what you're changing in this?
And I'm not sure if Ms. Hollowell is here. She may want to comment also.
All right, Assistant Chief Smith, public firing EMS. Basically, there's, uh, three main changes. One was the ordinance is, excuse me, somewhat outdated. It was basically, a lot of the information there was from our merger back in two thousand and one, we merged fire and EMS. So a lot of the verbiage was outdated and was no longer relevant to what we use today. Another thing is we're adding some professional development programs to the ordinance where in the past, we just relied on time and service, time and rank, uh, maybe, you know, associate degrees. But now we're looking at more relevant, uh, uh, programs like to be a driver, we want you to be, have a national, national professional qualifications for pump operator, um, for, to be eligible for the promotion to fire officers, lieutenants and captains. We're requesting that you, um, take courses such as firefighter one and firefighter two and management level courses, uh, to be eligible for these promotions. And also with, uh, reducing our aides to eighteen, we've, uh, we're hiring a lot of younger people, so we want to reduce, uh, or increase the time that you're eligible to put in for sergeant from three years to five years, because we got eighteen-year-olds getting hired and they're eligible just because they're on for three years. So we're just trying to increase that so we get a little bit, um, more time in, in rank before they're eligible to put in for sergeant. And some other things are just, like I said, some dates that were associated with our old, uh, ordinance before we did the merger back in two thousand and one. So that's the, just of the, the main changes that we're making.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief Smith.
Okay, any other questions while we've got? All right, we'll bring that back next week then for final vote on, uh, the promotion criteria. And the last item we've got is an ordinance, Muskogee County Prison Policy four twenty-one hundred. Warden, is the warden here, Walker?
He was. I think he had a, an issue arise that he had to go see too.
Okay, I think Ms. Hollowell is still here, but this would refine the criteria for promotion or correction. Sergeant correction, lieutenant, and deputy warden. Yep, anybody want, Mayor Smith Hollowell, any questions?
Mayor Protem?
I had a chance to speak with the warden regarding this ordinance coming before us. And basically, it allows him to hire anybody that has experience in this area. In other words, the current ordinance requires you to have experience in the Muskogee County prison before you can be promoted. So if you have experience at another prison and want to transfer in, then he can hire you in at that point if you qualify to meet all the expectations that he has out there. This just broadens his ability to hire not only within, but without, outside too. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you good, Ms. Hollowell? We'll bring that back for a vote next week at 9 o'clock, Mayor. The last item on our list, business item, is to authorize the payment of funds for legal services to the law firm of James Jones Fortunates and Environmental Law Firm in Atlanta. We could get a vote on that.
All right, just motion second to approve. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
Okay, then we do have a request for executive session concerning litigation, potential litigation, personnel, and privileged attorney-client documents, all as provided by Georgia law. That's all we've got, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the public agenda. Each individual will have five minutes. And if you can't complete your comments in five minutes, we'll be glad to offer you another three minutes towards the end of the meeting. And again, as Pastor River Grace talked about this morning, we want to provide grace to one another, so no outbursts or any names being included. All right, first up is Ms. Claire Thomas, representing animal advocacy regarding the Columbus Animal Control and Care Center. Good morning. Well, good afternoon now, sorry.
It's lunchtime. Did she give everybody the handout?
She's putting, passing them out now.
Okay.
If you would just state your name and what state you live in.
My name is Claire Thomas, and I am a lifetime Columbus resident.
Good deal.
Born and raised. So my timer has already started?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't know you weren't ready yet.
Well, I was going to wait until y'all.
Well, are you going to just read that, or? Okay, they'll get them all. You can start your comments.
Okay, so again, my name is Claire Thomas. I thank you for allowing me to speak with you this morning about my personal experience recently adopting from Columbus Animal Control Center. As I said, I'm a lifetime resident of Columbus. My 12-year-old daughter wanted to be here with me, but she could not miss school. So instead, she chose to write you a letter that you will see at the end of the packet. We saved Macy on October 29th, our fifth rescue. She arrived on Tuesday. My daughter and I went to see her on Saturday around 4:45-ish. We were extremely disappointed, heartbroken, and disgusted in the facility. I'm going to try not to get emotional. In the room doorway, there was a large pile of feces, and I cannot even begin to describe the disgusting stench in the facility. Macy would not even walk and had to be carried out for us to meet her. Asked if we could take her outside the door, right there, to see if she could even in fact walk. And they said, no, sorry, we're not allowed to take them outside. So basically, I've been there five days. So we have dogs on a five-day stray hole that aren't allowed to come outside of their kennel at all. And then I later discovered from a volunteer that some dogs have not been out of their kennels for weeks, and that is absolutely heart-wrenching to me. As we're leaving at closing time, we see feces in every single kennel we saw. Dogs had feces smeared all over the bottom of their kennels. What we witnessed that day and this past Saturday was a disgusting filthy facility, a little bit like Counsel Tucker was talking about the park that you helped clean. It was disgusting and filthy. So I just want to highlight a little bit of verbiage from CAC's standard operating procedures that we received by an open records request. Main kennels are to be inspected by kennel supervisor every hour to ensure all dogs have clean water in cages. When spot cleaning is required, it will be done immediately. Dogs are not to be allowed to remain in a cage containing feces, urine, or water spills. So we picked Macy up the next day, a Sunday, and there was one person working. How is one person expected to or capable of following the SOP to properly clean, feed, water 60-plus animals, answer the phone, do owner returns, and any adoption appointments? Can we get the Muskogee County inmates back to help? In January's audit, it was recommended that CAC re-implement that program. With the center participating in the Bissell Pet Foundation events, shouldn't the leadership want the facility to be clean and presentable to people coming to meet adoptable pets? The Saturday, we went to meet some pets, and we thought we'd be able to meet leadership at the center, particularly being the day after the current Bissell event started, which ended up being an amazing adoption day. But unfortunately, we're told she only works Monday through Friday. Why would she not be there helping? Like, give your staff and volunteers a little bit of help. I truly hope that each of you has a vested interest in animal care and our sheltering system. As Counsel Davis said earlier, you're failing the city and the citizens. Please, the community begs you to be the voice of the voiceless babies of animal control, for you to make the much-needed, desperately needed changes. As Counsel Crab stated earlier, we really seem to be reactive and not proactive, and she would really like to see that happen, and so does the community. So I'm going to read you my letter from my daughter. I'll try not to cry. Good morning. At the CACC facility, animals are living in horrid conditions. I visited the center October 28th and December 2nd. During both visits, I saw dirty kennels, dogs with poop smeared all over the bottom of their kennels, and even poop outside of kennels. In some kennels, the metal dividers were down, separating the dogs from their water bowls, and leaving some animals stepping or even laying in their pee or poop. One dog has been there since November 22nd with a broken leg, but still hadn't received attention from a vet for an X-ray. There's also a tripod, three-legged dog, whose leg was amputated at the CACC facility. Thank you for taking the time to read this. I want to thank y'all again for allowing me to speak with you today. If you want to look, page three and four, there's photos. I have nine seconds.
You've got another 10 seconds.
There's photos that will show evidence of the filth. And I will say, the fourth speaker, Savannah, was not able to come because it's kind of gotten a longer take, and I think she had to go to work.
Okay.
She won't be here.
Well, thank you. One of the things that I'll mention to you, I mean, we, I know that we just had a little skull session on how to kind of make sure that some of these things are done on a regular basis, because they typically do a pretty good job, from what we're hearing, in cleaning these kennels out. But what we've asked them to do is put a, like a chart up, so the public can see it. And every time there's a resource expended or performed on one of the animals, whether it's cleaning the kennel, whether it's feeding them, administering any kind of medicine, taking them outside for exercise, that they will put their initials and a time down there so that the public, anybody that wants to see, can come in and see what has been done and when it's been done. So it'll tell us if there are gaps, if we've got, if we're going 45 minutes to an hour before we go take a look at the kennels again, then we will be able to identify that and shorten it up. That's just one of the things we've talked about recently, so.
And if the information can be trusted, I guess.
Do what? Well, it's, it's a management tool, number one, but one A is it allows the public to have some clear and visible information on when the last attention's been paid to this dog. So we'll check on that.
And I might have missed a sentence on my daughter's letter. Sorry, I'm nervous speaking in public.
That's okay.
About the dogs being separated from the water with the divider doors down.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Kathy Tanner regarding the financial records from the Columbus Animal Control and Care with regards to animal welfare and accountability. We should, you can, the clerk will pass those out for you, Kathy, if you want.
Not on the clock. My name is Kathy Tanner, and I've lived in Columbus, Georgia for 56 years. I have followed the city government my whole life. As my father, Walter Jackson White Jr., was the city administrator for 20 years. I'm here today to discuss the current situation at Columbus Animal Care and Control as an animal lover and as a lifelong resident of Columbus. I'm appalled and sickened by the way CACC is being run. We need to look at videotapes like we do at school. I could go on about issues that cost lives every day, like phones not being answered when people are calling to try to save their animals. But here, I'll highlight just a few of the most surprising examples of the big problems with CACC management. First, refusing to get time-saving and life-saving software. City audit of CACC released in January of 2023 said that they needed, that they were still keeping paper files for animals, and staff was wasting time repeatedly looking for paperwork. The recommended solution was Shelter software. It is a year later now, there is still no software. Why not? They are understaffed, and this would allow, this would save time and lives. This could be done quickly and affordably right now. Shelter Love software, which PAWS uses, only costs $2 per adoption and has a donation button to allow you to cover the cost or even make money. And Shelter Love says you can get started in as little as 15 minutes. So I know my students can do it. This software also would automatically put adoptable animals on petfinder.com, which is not now done, and it would increase the adoptions. I was told CACC was offered two years of Shelter Love for free. Given this generous offer, why did CACC manager Kanita Hardnett-Johnson suddenly, and with no explanation, stop communicating with Shelter Love? Two, flooding the community with unfixed animals. I know you hear a lot of feedback about animals being killed for spays. CACC's own euthanasia SOP says that they're working diligently to identify and address the source of the problem aggressively, focusing on spaying and neutering, which is completely false. They still allow adopters to leave with an unaltered animal and a voucher for a spay and neuter. The city audit also found that CACC staff only followed up on 40% of the adopted animals for verification. That leaves another 60% in my classroom. You just got an F. Completely, it, you see a steady stream of unfixed animals going to the community, and then we have another problem. Having this, though, as their policy, why did they adopt out last week a male pit, Max Larry, and a female pit, Isadora, to the same family, both unfixed, and knowing that PAWS Clinic, where their vouchers can be used, is booked until 2024? They have no openings as of right now. Amazingly, CACC, though, is finally participating in the Bissell Empty the Shelters adoption event sponsored by the Bissell Pet Foundation. Fantastic, that's great, but it is a written requirement, also in your packet, that all animals be spayed or neutered and microchipped before leaving the facility, and CACC does not do that. The reason that is a little teacher kind of thing I did there, we were informed yesterday that Bissell is making a temporary exception for facilities that use vouchers. However, they did not email us back with anything about the microchip requirement. Regardless, CACC would do better to find a way to make sure animals that are fixed and chipped before they leave. Turning away opportunities for help and free money, this is the biggest. CACC is a partner of Best Friends, a well-known national organization that offers grants and other types of support. The city paid over $4,000 last year to send three CACC managers to a three-day Best Friends conference in lovely Houston, Texas. Due to the increase in the number of animals being killed since the new manager took over, Best Friends decided to offer CACC extra help to reverse this trend. You would think the support would be more than welcome, but apparently not, because then there's an email from Best Friends saying that they had to step back from helping in the face of resistance from leadership. I can only assume that would be CACC leadership. The current manager of CACC was questionably hired over some very qualified applicants, including the former CEO of PAWS Humane, who applied and never heard back from the city. I ask that current CACC management be removed and that you move CACC out from under Public Works now. We need experience, motivated, and qualified people.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tanner, your five minutes are up.
Okay.
If you want to come back at the end, though, we'll give you three more minutes.
Well, I just need one, two more sentences. But you can read it.
Yeah, we'll read it.
Yes, at the end.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next is Mr. Alton Russell. Oh, I'm sorry, first, before Mr. Russell comes up, hang on just a second. Counsel Kogle?
I just want, I just want the animal control speakers just to know that we have requested that we have an update from staff on animal control that's coming back next week during the next council meeting on the December 12th. And we'll be able to address some of those concerns and some. We do get all your emails and your messages. So do know that, that that is received by counsel, and we do have that coming back next week. So if you can take time out of your schedule, we'd love to have you. If not, you can catch the replay.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Speaking on the new judicial building funding.
Yes, I appreciate y'all giving me this time this morning. My name is Alton Russell. I do live in Columbus. I also noticed that there's a packet out front that covered a lot of the things that y'all have already known that I have on my notes here this morning. But I figured it'd be worth it if you didn't know a couple of things that I feel about this. And the most important thing I want y'all to know, I'm not going to speak about the finance audit or the financial department. I'm not going to talk about that. But listen, two things that I've always heard from the beginning of this splash project was, and the first thing I heard recently about the opposition was about the shadow. Well, you know, I don't claim to be real smart and a rocket science, but you know what? I've always been told that the sun rises in the east and sets in the west. And you know what? The Springer on 10th Street, the new government center, and the old tower face north and south. So if there's going to be a shadow, it would have to be east or west. It can't be north or south. And that, you know, and maybe I'm too logical about that, but that's number one. Number two is I've, I heard that, gosh, it only passed by 54%, and it wasn't many people. Well, listen, 54% is the majority of those who voted, and I believe that it would be terrible for this council or any governmental identity to try to run the government based on the folks who did not vote. I just can't see how that's even perfect. Now, there's also some bad information out there that I've seen, and I've been called about, that we're going to be $40 million over budget. Well, that's not what the packet says, and that's not what I've seen from y'all. I've seen that it's, that I'm only going to spend $198 million or so. And it is going to be over budget, but the new concept is putting it within budget. So I think that's important. I also think that moving it, delaying it to any extent at all, is going to cost us more money, because every day is money. And I just don't see how that's even perfect. The other thing is, is I don't think we need to be able to have a question asked by, to this council at some point, is why didn't y'all do this earlier instead of us having to come up with more money? And I promise you, that will be a question that will be asked if y'all don't move forward with this project today. I'm very much in favor of doing it today, not waiting. Don't stop, don't start over, don't spend the money to start over. Now, the other thing is, since my name appeared on this agenda today, I got 162 phone calls. And let me tell you what, and I talk, well, not all of them, but I try to. But listen, 162 phone calls, 160 of them said, "I hope you tell them to go forward with this project." Two of them said, "Don't." Now, I don't know. Now, I don't know what kind of, but I don't know, but I bet a hundred and sixty-two of those people voted. So even, even if you look at that, it's one sixty to two. So I'm hoping that y'all will, I understand, in my opinion, in my observation, this is a great project. Y'all spent a lot of time and we spent a lot of money and a lot of effort has gone in to get a design, to get whatever the options are, one, two, three or four, that y'all come up with a great plan and a positive plan. And I think it'll work. So my position here today is to ask y'all to be sure that you vote in favor of moving forward. And I know you're going to do that today with this referendum that's coming up or whatever it is, Amendment fifteen I think it is. And I'm, I'm asking y'all to do the, the people a favor and let's get it done and let's move on and quit talking about it. We need less talk and more action. And I appreciate y'all's time very much and I appreciate everything that y'all do each and every day, even though, believe it or not, there are times when I might not agree with you, but, but I do know that y'all do the best you can and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and your council.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, appreciate it. All right, and I think we did have a Ms. Savannah Brown and you said she was, okay. All right, well, thank y'all for being here today. All right, so we'll move on now to the city manager's agenda. The city manager, he'll hit you light.
Mr. Mayor, first I've got amended memorandum of understanding with enrichment services program for utility assistance program administration.
Motion and second to approve, any discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, Chris, if you'll please put the, put it on the screen and, oh, I'm sorry, I got it. Hang on, councilors, once it appears, y'all can register you votes. Thank you, Chris.
Next.
Missing one vote, I think. Missing one vote, did we get one? Okay. All right, it's approved. That's right, it's approved.
Uh, next, Ms. Mayor, I've got a, I've got a twenty twenty-four legislative agenda add-on by the probate judge. He's asking that we submit to the general assembly and ask them to permit.
There's a motion to approve the add-on to legislative agenda as well as a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Chris, please put that on the screen, councilors, please vote. That's approved.
And that is for a technology fee. I've got twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Victim of Crime Act grant.
All right, motion is second to accept the voca grant, any discussion on that item? Uh, hearing none, please put it on the screen, Chris. Thank you. Councilors, you can register you votes. Two more, I think. One, we're good, that's it, it's approved.
Got several purchases for the civic center.
All right, there's, there's a motion to approve and a second to approve all of the purchases, I guess, what, A through E, I'm sorry. So the first, uh, first five of the purchases, approve items A through E. Anyone want?
E.
So, does anybody want one of those pulled? All right, all right, we'll split this into a voice vote, Chris, so all those that are in favor of A through E, please signify by saying aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, those are approved.
Uh, A is a civic center roof replacement, B would be Zamboni ice resurfacers for the civic center, C hockey LED scoreboard for the civic center, and D vacuum litter collector for the civic center, and E is a, is one vehicle for the Columbus Police Department. It's a Chevrolet Traverse for the police department. And I believe those are the ones that were approved.
All right, there's a motion to approve aye on the purchases, uh, any discussion on that item, on the second as well, all right, please, uh, Chris, please put it on the screen.
And while there, he's doing that, that would be donation of tasers and accessories, body video recorders, et cetera, uh, from the Columbus Police Department.
What, I'm sorry, just all in favor of approval of item aye, say aye. Any opposed?
And so that's a donation to the Valley Police Department, uh, Valley, Alabama, pardon? That was aye.
Yeah.
So I'm going back to F, uh, we've got F, G and H that's left. Okay.
Okay, that's a good idea.
So those will come later as the council has requested.
I'm sorry, we've got a couple folks, uh, Councilor Davis.
Mayor, I just want to bring out, can I touch a subject on G?
You can.
Okay, um, I, I think I asked earlier to have, if we can get Tyler in here to Tyler Technologies to talk to them a little bit and ask them some questions. Our preference would be to go, to do that before we move forward on any kind of a recommendation to do upgrades, but at the same time, I know, I think I've read in, uh, information that this is one of the recommendations that we need to go ahead and, and, um, approve this subscription for, I think it's for the upcoming year or through twenty-five, I believe. I may be wrong on that, but with that said, um, it might be the right thing to go ahead and, and make a motion to approve G unless there's somebody else that has a conflict with it.
All right, there's a motion and a second to go ahead and approve G, uh, there's a couple of folks queued up, is this to the motion? Okay.
Does this contract include any training hours?
This is the general, uh, subscription for our yearly phase.
Understood, and as part of that subscription, do they provide training on the software?
Not, uh, unless we ask for it, so it's usually extra, so.
How much extra is it?
I would have to get a quote because it's buy a product.
So there, there's no free hours included with it, there's no free training hours included with the subscription?
Not in that sense, no.
When is the best time to request those training hours? Is it when we're negotiating the subscription?
Correct, at the beginning of the contract, and there was training hours for Tyler products at the beginning of the contracts.
Okay, but we've exhausted all those free training hours?
Yeah, because they would be during implementation of the system.
So I, wait, to clarify, the, the beginning of the contract, so this, is this a new contract that we're?
This is just a renewal.
Okay, and at the renewal, there's no discussion of training hours at that time?
It's still covered under the original agreement.
All right, is this to the motion? All right, Councilor Crabbe.
I want to go a little bit further from, um, Councilor Begley's. When the training was offered, did everybody in IT take the training?
The program wouldn't really be IT, the, the system, we pay the bills for a lot of the software, but these programs are for other departments like engineering and finance and inspection and codes, those are the people that would be trained.
Okay, because it, it just, it just seems like they need a refresher course. There is, I don't think they're using the software to its fullest advantage. It feels like they're missing some things. And so, I mean, I would, I would encourage us looking into getting some training, some, you know, maybe we have new employees that never were trained on it. I know that it was, it was mentioned in the audit, um, about finance. I think that this is a tool that we gave to that depart, to these departments that, um, if it, if they knew how to use it and used it properly, that it would save a lot of time and effort for our, for our staff.
And again, IT's role is, um, all of the software packages run through us because we make sure that they could physically like operate in our environment, but the actual departments, that are the owners, so to speak, the users of the software, uh, that, that would be different, but I'll make sure I bring this all to their attention.
Okay, so there's a motion, second to approve G, uh, no further conversation on it, so all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, G's approved. And, uh, Councilor Thomas?
Um, Mr. City Manager, I, on item H, I see that Ms., um, that Director Short is, is here. Please make sure that, that this is addressed when she makes her presentation to us.
Yeah, these are additional cards and she can mention the cards when she.
That's, yeah, I understand that, but if she would discuss that when she gives her report, thank you.
Sure.
All right, and we've got, we've got a couple of updates on, we're going to hold the other two items till after that.
Okay, yeah. So next I've got an update on the judicial center, um, and Ryan Pruitt is here and we also have representatives from SLAM and Gilbane here as well, Director Ryan Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, good afternoon, members of council, Mayor Protem, Ms. Assistant City Attorney, um, here today to provide an update on the progress of the judicial center. Still in the middle of a design process of working through that, um, and refining everything, looking at the budget to make sure we're still hitting the numbers. A packet, a fact sheet, um, with, you know, the basic description of the project as well as a timeline, uh, dating back to the original intent to pursue a splash in 2019 to today as long as, as well as some future scheduled dates, uh, pending council's approval to move forward as well as renderings, uh, the current renderings, concept images of the, the building is being passed out, that's the packet that Mr. Russell referred to, um, that's on the back table. We also have a webpage that's on the city's website that, that contains, uh, the same information, um, so the public can go to our website to get, um, the up-to-date information. So I'll introduce, um, the team members and, and turn it over to them. We have Douglas Kleppen, uh, he's a principal with the SLAM Collaborative, he's the.
As, as I understand, this presentation is on the columbusga.org page, all you have to do is click that at the top of that, when that shows up, click it at the top and it goes to this, right? They don't have to go to inspections and code or, or planning.
Correct, it is on the city's homepage when you go to columbusga.gov, there'll be a picture of the rendering and it says judicial center information, you just click that picture and it'll take you to the webpage.
Thank you.
So we have Doug Kleppen, principal architect with the SLAM Collaborative here as well as Henry Painter, uh, the project executive for Gilbane Building Company, uh, they've both been up here before, so they're going to run through this update, um, on both the design and construction sides and then we can answer any questions about the purchasing item that was on the agenda, so I'll turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Ryan, good afternoon. This is, um, really just a, an update, um, that has, um, we wanted to talk a little bit of the current design status, the status of the project, uh, we're going to touch briefly on a stakeholder update sessions we had last week. Uh, there's a series of images that talk about construction sequencing, uh, we'll give an update on the cost status, um, and talk a little bit about the project schedule moving forward. So, this, uh, as a result of your, um, your decision on November seventh, and I apologize, I wasn't able to be, uh, present for that particular meeting, uh, this up, changed the overall gross square footage and effect added one floor roughly thirty thousand square feet to get us to this total of three hundred and forty-two. We have the capacity for eighteen courtrooms over time. Those don't have to be developed as courtrooms, but they could be, they're attached to, are in custody delivery, um, and fit within, uh, all the other parameters within the court planning, uh, access and separate circulations. Initially, we are going to distribute five of those spaces as shell throughout the building. The list you see is the same list we presented throughout, it is the tenants of the, of the facility, all the courts are represented as well as, uh, development for the parking. Relative to the status of the project, we have construction documents in for permit and working on some review cycles for our civil package and a deep foundation. Uh, on December fourteenth, we are delivering a design development, uh, that's over a thousand sheets from all the respective disciplines within the project, which will give us a higher level of detail and confidence by which we can confirm that we're still tracking, uh, with our budgetary numbers. We have a fifty percent design development, I'm sorry, CD, uh, as well as some additional construction packages for structural that are in, uh, spring and in, uh, late summer, we are developed, finishing our construction documents for the rest of the, the package. These series of images are, um, in effect, repeated from prior, uh, presentations, so we are continuing to develop the detail, but the overall scheme of the project, uh, remains as illustrated here. All those images and the renderings that we produced actually anticipated the eighth floor or the additional square footage, so these depict or actually, uh, the, the resolution that passed on the seventh, this is the, the, the definition of that scope in terms of the conceptual renderings and the massing and, uh, number of floors, et cetera. So again, we are in the midst of developing final material selections for pricing and doing some detailing of these as part of the development, but the concept still has predominantly the north elevation is, uh, the public spaces associated with the courtrooms and the court waiting, we borrow that light. The courtrooms are as they've been designed, almost a year now, we met, um, uh, and did all the courtroom mockups with each of the user groups and those are all included within the, in the scope. Just a, a highlight on the parking, there's a, some, just to, to clarify, so we have really multiple, uh, options for parking. There are secure parking, the, for staff, this is, um, primarily the existing parking deck that's below and between the wings. We are building a new surface lot that is currently in the footprint of the existing government center and we are making improvements to the south lot for, um, additional capacity across Ninth Street. And we have a distribution of street parking spaces, including handicap spaces up along Tenth Street, uh, to supplement, um, the entire, uh, parking strategy for the project. On the twenty-seventh, last week, we had a couple of stakeholder meetings, um, actually a number of you participated, um, in those, I think that, uh, that we covered a, a range of topics. Uh, there was a, a specific session, uh, with the Springer and, and representatives from the Opera House, and then we had a general, um, meeting with, with most of the folks that are, are listed in this. And again, we talked about, uh, construction activities, anticipating, um, how traffic, uh, material deliveries and the sequence of, of activities and phases on the site would be addressed. We're going to go through that presentation in just a moment, uh, with, um, my friend Henry Painter from Gilbane to kind of walk you through that. I think one of the takeaways. I think one of the takeaways, um, and again, you can, uh, feel free to add to, to this accounting, but I want to say that one of the takeaways in, in which was a very constructive session was a pledge to develop channels for communication between, uh, the neighbors and the construction entities so that we are informing them in advance of, of how things are gonna progress and upcoming activities that could affect them. And conversely, they're gonna communicate, uh, particular program, uh, s- things that they are doing so that we can do our best to coordinate and not conflict or cause any undue burden. I'm gonna let Henry walk through. Again, these slides were part of those updates, but we, for the, as part of the update here, we wanted to walk through, um, the sequence of activities and construction.
Mayor, City Manager, councilors.
Henry, I'm sorry. Excuse me, just a second. I apologize. I missed one. Uh, Councilor Thomas?
Um, on the slide that you had on the, um, street parking of the parking, it looks, I, I don't see on this that on Second Avenue, on the east side is, there's currently parking. Will that remain?
There is some parking that does remain, yes, along the, so I will tell you, I'm not entirely confident that the renderers got all of those, uh, you know, we see they volunteered some trees in places that we know that don't exist, et cetera. So, uh, this is not, um, factual in terms of where those parking spaces are. But we are, uh, providing, uh, it's, it is, uh, you know, we're adjusting the lane uh, between the drivelanes. I think it's two lanes now and we're gonna absorb one of those, give us a little bit more buffer. But we are providing some parking on First, Second and, uh, on Tenth Street.
Okay, because right now on Second Avenue, there are, there's parking on both sides of the street.
And I'm, I'm only referring to adjustments on, uh, the adjacent or the property, um, that really that west boundary, nothing, we're not touching the stuff on the other side. So those angle parking that's currently there, those remain.
Okay.
The, the adjustments we're making are, uh, an adjustment to the buffer and then we still have some parallel spaces on Second.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Henry. I'm sorry.
All right. Mayor, City Managers, Councilors, it's great to see you again. Let's, uh, try to move this forward. Um, if you have questions, I know you'll ask, uh, but this is the presentation that we went through with the stakeholders. To give you a side aerial, the yellow area is where the new courthouse tower would go. You have First Avenue to the left, Second Avenue to the right and Tenth Avenue, of course, to the north. The way we're looking at the phasing itself is actually five phases. Phase one is what would actually start in the month of January if you approve the, um, amendment that's out there, you know, for vote today. What that would do is allow us to go into the parking deck, the existing deck, prepare that to get ready for the actual construction. What does that mean? We'll actually be building temporary walls to separate the existing parking from where the demolition of the north end of the deck would occur. We have to build a concrete wall at the lowest level to get ready for backfill of the, uh, north end of the deck. As you move into phase two, you will actually then see, um, the wing demolition occurring and the actual construction of the tower itself. Phase three will occur after the new courthouse tower is up and people, um, are getting prepared to move in. We have to do the same thing on the south end, separate ourselves inside the parking deck, um, to get ready for phase four and five, which would be the demolition of the existing tower and the new hardscape and parking after the tower is demoed. So the next piece, we do look at the individual phases. And what you're seeing here is the phase one, um, actual work. The red would be the site fence that would go around the construction site to separate us from the public for safety. On this particular one, on the south end where it says enter on the left side, the fence would be located to that location to allow the people that are still in the east and west wings to access that. The folks in the east wing will actually get relocated once the new juvenile court, um, temporary space is finished down in the ground level of the existing tower. The west wing will be contingent on the completion of the sheriff's, uh, new office so he can move evidence storage out. As we get into this, let's talk about how we're trying to prevent interruptions in the city itself. On Tenth Street, the parking that is on the far north end of the site, the angle, that will go away for construction during the construction. But we will still have two lanes going westbound and one lane going eastbound, the same way that is currently configured. Um, we've looked at that, making sure that, uh, we're having drop-off areas. At the stakeholders meeting, one of the things they had a concern about was school buses actually dropping students off at the Springer and that is part of why we have two lanes going westbound because those are the lanes that would be in front of the Springer to allow the drop-off but still allow traffic to get past the school buses. The other main aspect is actually on First Avenue and Second Avenue. We will change that to one-way traffic. First Avenue will be southbound only. Second Avenue will be northbound. The reason for that is to keep traffic off of Tenth Street and we are able to use those, uh, lanes that we are closing to actually stage the material, concrete trucks and not impact the traffic flow on Tenth Street. At the same time, we're making sure that for the River Center, the loading dock stays in operation. We understand they have late-night deliveries for setup and if the, the semi truck cannot get into their loading dock, they will be charged for that. So we've made precautions to make sure that we do not lock at all their loading dock. Now let's talk about something else, safety. One of the things that we will be doing prior to any of the construction is we will do pre-damage surveys, videotaping of all the yellow buildings around the site just to document the existing conditions. And then we set up seismic monitors. That way, we know what vibrations may be caused. We'll start out to make sure that as we're starting to work, we're not having any vibration that could affect any of the adjacent buildings. That will be monitored during the course of the whole project. We've actually got seismic monitors on northeast and west sides. But we will do that pre-damage survey of all the buildings. Any questions on the logistics and/or schedule?
No, sir. Oh, hang on. Counselor, uh, Begley?
On the.
Might want to move your mic.
On the schedule, do you have a, I, I know our timeline shows completion, but I think maybe this is helpful. So of that building construction phase, can you break that into more specific phases such as, I think you said there was some securing of space, then the demolition and then the new build. Can you get into more details of it?
Yeah, so we would look at, in December of twenty-three, we would actually mobilize. But you really would not see us, because we're inside the parking deck, getting the preparation ready for the construction. In the month of February, you would start seeing equipment on the outside of the building, on the north end, where we're starting to do the excavation itself with the K-signs that will be the actual foundations. Those would start in the April timeframe, which then moves to June. You'll start seeing a structure come up. As the structure comes up, um, you'll see the exterior or the building envelope, um, you know, being applied, finishes going on on the inside for a completion of June of twenty-twenty-six. So at that point, sir, uh, happy days, we're moving, moving out of the existing building into the new building. And then after that, if you see the third box, that would be the abatement of the existing tower and the demolition. And after that is, uh, complete in February of twenty-seven, then we would start the parking lots and the hardscape where the existing, uh, tower actually sits now.
So we'd, we'd see equipment in early twenty-twenty-four? That, that catch, that the foundation, the actual new build would start in, in spring of twenty-four? Where we start seeing the building go up?
Yes. And we can supply in future updates, uh, a more detailed schedule. Um, our current, current schedule right now is about six hundred activities. So we would have to summarize that.
So relative to, uh, scope and budget, I just wanted to, we have, uh, three hundred and forty-two thousand square feet. That represents, uh, a capacity for eighteen courtrooms and includes twenty-four judicial offices. So there's been some discussion about ratio of judges' chambers to courtrooms. And this, we're actually pre-building future judicial offices and they're, and they are at a greater rate than we are providing courtrooms. I believe this new model will allow them to continue, um, and improve upon court sharing and load sharing and calendar sharing, uh, throughout time. The project, because, you know, there's some premiums that are associated with the courthouse relative to the construction. So this building has nine different elevators. We're separating different circulations. So that's a, a huge investment. And within this facility distributed is maybe the most expensive space because we're building, in effect, uh, full security holding cells uh, with security-specific fixtures, lighting, um, everything, ceilings, all of these things are specific, uh, really detention-grade construction. And that's probably where most of, you know, that's the highest cost per square foot really because those are very specialized areas. So thirty-one cells distributed, uh, between courtrooms as well as staging areas in, in the basement of the, of the building.
I guess, just to reaffirm, that six million overrun of the one ninety-eight, that includes the additional seven million that was recently approved by council to create that shell.
The budget of one ninety-eight includes that additional seven.
So it was at like one ninety-two, I guess?
One ninety-two, five hundred. But Doug, that six hundred has come down. That's an old number. We are sitting around four million dollar range with our.
Oh, we're.
Yes.
So the tote board's already gone down. But, but that percentage is still within, uh, the ranges that we have for contingencies and escalation. So, and again, we're about to get a really definitive, uh, set of scope documents that we believe will further verify, uh, how we're performing. And again, we have the ability to make adjustments as we move forward, but for where we're sitting right now, we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, hold on, just, uh, Counselor Davis is in queue.
Okay, I wanna focus on the, uh, the budget right now, one, uh, ninety-eight. So are we, clarify for me, are we under a GC at-risk contract here?
CM at-risk, yes. We currently do not have the, uh, guaranteed maximum price yet. That will come in the March timeframe. We will be doing a budget check off the December fifteenth drawings that Doug has mentioned to make sure we, uh, are heading toward the budget.
So this one ninety-eight number could be reduced and go lower?
Yes, what I actually stated earlier, the one ninety-eight is actually an old number. Right now, we are not sitting the six million. We are down around the four million dollars.
You're still refining the, the numbers?
Yes.
Okay, what about, uh, within this scope here, what about, like, let's just call them unexpected surprises, okay? Um, stuff like the structural support, any change or issues there? Are you dealing with that once you get in there? Utilities, uh, stormwater, those kind of things that are out there that might need some extra attention. Uh, suitable soul, which is a big one. I want to come back to that. But, uh, does this, uh, one ninety-eight, does it incorporate enhanced landscaping? All the parking needs that are necessary, uh, does it deal with the current underground parking and stabilizing that and doing whatever you need to do there? Uh, is there, uh, a, uh, a plan to deal with any kind of construction impact on the surrounding roads, which we know they're gonna be at some point in time? I, I don't know if that would be covered here or if that's in another fund, but I'm asking if it's in covered here, any kind of damages to the road that might need to be repaving, et cetera, getting it back to, um, tip-top shape. And then, um, speak to the contingency. I, I, I do want to know what the contingency and, you know, I'm hoping you're not gonna tell me that the contingency covers all this, but, uh, uh, can you speak to those issues? I just, just.
Yes, sir.
And then I want to come back to suitable soul.
All right, great questions. Um, what the scope includes is the work that is in the new tower plus the added floor. It also includes the work inside the existing parking deck, the modifications to bring it up to code, put new, uh, lighting in it, adjust some of the sprinkler, uh, heads and build those walls and, you know, restriping. It also includes the demolition cost of both the miscellaneous demolition for the two wings and the complete abatement and demolition of the tower itself. Um, the contingency, we have within this number a five percent contingency off the direct work. So off of a hundred and ninety-two million, five hundred thousand budget, that would be almost an eight million dollar contingency that's built into this. On top of that, we have escalation of three point one million that's also built into this. That's factored at two percent per year. We have a two and a, two and one-quarter years worth of, uh, escalation built into this for cushion and, you know, to take care of unknowns or surprises.
So what I hear you saying is that all the change orders are pretty much being addressed in this number and the contingency that you're presenting for. So you don't expect any change orders, of course. There's always surprises. We know that, but are we talking the same language here?
Yes, the only change orders you should expect is if the city decides to change the scope. Let me give an example. You have shell space right now for future courtrooms. If you come back and say, hey, we've added a new judge, we need to build out one of those shell-spaced courtrooms, of course, that would be a change in the program.
Your demolition, you're fine with that? You're fine with your numbers on your demolition, all cost?
Yes, currently.
Okay.
We've done, let me, let me back up. We've actually already had completed, we've had, um, hazardous material testing done inside the tower itself that identifies what has to be abated. The big challenge is actually on those tulip columns that go up the sides of the, uh, tower itself. So because of that early work in identifying what the hazardous materials are, we were able to get a better number instead of just trying to guess.
And you're prepared for all the abatement of the demolition?
Yes.
Okay. Now I want to come back to suitable soul. Do we have any kind of clause that protects, uh, that protects the government or the taxpayers in this case as they're building, right? They're paying for it. The, do we have any clauses in there that, uh, of the unknowns? That we're not gonna all of a sudden get a big bill because we're having to dig out stuff, move stuff and it's not there. I heard you say that the tower was gonna be, the new tower was gonna be the, on pilings, right? I think that's what you're. I think that's what you're saying there, so that would mitigate a lot of those issues, but what about, well, if, if, you know, I mean, you're just digging out and filling with parking space on the rest of it, so.
Okay, so.
If, if you stick to the current plan, you would demo that and then fill it back in, and then it's parking space. I don't, I mean, am I foreseeing, are you foreseeing any unsuitable soil type issues here?
So there has been some testing done of the soils herself, some borings to check the soil conditions. The soil testing did not show any hazardous soil or material. Now, the drawback is that they have testing done every five feet out of five-foot grid? No, sir. So is there still a potential that there could be something down there? Always. But as Pam has made a statement, you take the extra floor of the seven and a half million dollar add, the budget of 185 that we are shooting towards, she has 188 million to keep the $3 million as kind of a city contingency in case issues like that occur.
Well, would you object to having a clause in there that the GC would take care of all those issues under the current contract?
Yes, I would, just because I don't think you would like that number because, you know, there would be an unknown that nobody in this room could tell you what's underground there.
Can you talk about how you developed the price for the caissons?
Yes. Well, as Doug reminded me, is talking about how we developed the pricing for the caissons herself. What we have done is, like I said, with the actual testing, that gives us more information in order to make sure we know where the rock locations are, is a macro and the depth. And actually, the depth of those caissons are going to go 50 feet deep.
Well, right now, under this current plan, I think the only challenges would be on the site, that where you're building the new tower, right? Pretty much, everything else is stable when you do the demo and you just back, you know, backfill everything with, you know, soil, that's it, right? That's what you plan to do anyway. Am I missing something?
No, you're correct on that.
Okay, all right. The, so you're good about absorbing the cost, wait, let me back up. I saw up there the timeline, the schedule is 2027 completion. That's what, three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, we're at this point, you know, dealing with this matter and moving forward because we've had so many challenges with the current government center. I mean, that's how we got to this point. And, and any day, the way I look at it, any day, you know, the city manager's going to come here and say something of a need, emergency need, because we have to address that. We're still operating the courts out of that building and all aspects of pretty much the judicial branch of this government. So, does this money cover that, or is it come out of another contingency or another fund in case we have emergencies? I know it just, we had to do some renovations and stuff like that to move people. I'm assuming it comes out of this budget, but if the heating and air goes out, you know, you have electrical issue, you have a life safety issue, you have something over there that messes up, plumbing, you know, we know what that costs not long ago. I mean, help me understand how we're going to cover those costs.
Well.
And I don't, I hope nothing happens, but it's three years.
And you, you mean in the government center, tower itself?
Yes, it's.
We'll handle it.
It's suspect right now, right?
We would handle it just like we've handled it to this point. I mean, obviously, it's not going to be in that budget.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, there is no cost for yearly maintenance of the existing tower in this budget.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Huff?
Counselor Davis hit most of the points, but I just, I received several phone calls over the weekend and yesterday concerning cost. So if you would, one last time, just go through the basic costs because they had you 40 million over budget, which was a presentation we had, I won't say years ago, but months ago. So go back over the numbers so that the public can hear that we are, we were budgeted for 200 million. And COVID came, prices went up, but you scaled it back down to try to get as close to the 200 figures you can.
Well, I want to throw this out there, up until last week, there was a group out there thinking we had too much money. And I guess that narrative didn't stick for them, so this week, they're saying we're $40 million over, or will be $40 million over budget. What we have is if you actually go back to the November 7 meeting, the overall project cost, including design and pre-construction, the FF and E, which is the furniture, I'm going to have to buy you a new mic if I hit it one more time, the bond issuances and some of the testing, that overall total budget prior to the seven and a half being added was 204 million dollars, 153,000. Of that, the construction cost was 185 million. Now with the added floor, that will take the construction cost to 192 and a half million.
Okay.
And that, let me remind everybody, that does include those costs, the 7.8 million dollars of contingency and the 3.1 million dollars of escalation.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I just, I just, I just want to mention one thing, I don't think, I think people have forgotten, this has been going on since 2019, and really, the original plans were kind of helped developed by Mayor Tomlinson back in about 2017. So it's, it's been kind of moving in this direction. This council has done such an outstanding job of watching the money. And the reason I say that is the, the option of, of building a, oh man, the administrative building was very high. So council ended up seeing an opportunity to purchase the Sanovas building and used funding that was already existing millage rate and reassigned that, so it was zero net impact to the, to the taxpayers. So that was $50 million saved right there. Then when this building came in, partly because of increased cost of goods and increased costs of, cost of labor, at $50 million more than what we originally said, our design and construction team worked with council to bring that back down another 50 million. So council, over the last, over the last two years, has saved the taxpayers $100 million. We never know what the next day is going to bring, we may see some of the soil issues you're talking about, but it's, it's not going to be anywhere near where we would have been if we had not been able to value engineer that, this pending building down to the, to the 192 and had not purchased the Sanovas building to create the new, new city, city hall. So they've done a great job, and it doesn't get said very often because it's a lot of money and nobody wants to spend it, but we're in a position where we pretty much have to, so. Counselor Garrett?
Two things, I think one of the issues that y'all have brought up that, with the cost overage, is some, some folks who have reached out to me are talking about the total project cost, and they're concerned that that's going to be over. I understand the construction cost is within the 200 million, which was on the high end. So if you, I don't know if y'all want to talk a little bit more about that, but I know some of the public had, had issues with that. And my other question, y'all have got, I'm glad you have more elevators, and you've got a lot of other things that are going to be good additions, but is the total ownership cost going to change compared to our current tower? And by that, I mean, maintenance and just, is it going to be any more efficient? And do we, are we going to have more anticipated cost due to having more features?
Well, I would tell you that from an energy standpoint, even though it's a bigger building, this is going to be extremely energy efficient. I'm not sure I could stand today and give you the exact comparisons of energy usage, but we can do that and get back to you. But I just know that we are, it's, it's above code required energy utilization, and we're achieving really a high-performance solution for our energy usage. As far as the other, I mean, I think all of our selections have been based on long-term maintenance, so that we have material selections that will stand up to the foot traffic and the, the kind of regular usage you would anticipate for this kind of facility. The other question was about the overall budget, sir.
Yeah, I was just, I was just asking, and I think it would be good for the public to know, since one of the big questions, I think, has been what is the total project budget, including, you know, expenses for design, project, project management, all those, you know, an all-inclusive kind of budget?
Well, so we're still operating, the splosh was 200, we've added the seven and a half, so that's, that's where we're at, we're within that 207 and a half.
Was that 200 million supposed to cover just construction, or was that supposed to cover the total project cost?
That's a total project cost.
So the original splosh was 200 million. The splosh has generated four, roughly four and a half million of interest, that's how you go from 200 to the 4.5, or 4, 2.204 million, 500,000. Then on top of that is the seven and a half million that was brought in for the added floor. That did include the design cost, the pre-construction, the project management, the FF and E, and the bond issuances.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what Counselor was maybe getting at.
Yeah.
When you take out the FF and E and the demolition and all of those things, what's the construction budget?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Counselor Davis's discussion. Can you talk a little bit about the landscaping around the building, the enhanced landscaping?
We are repurposing the plaza, so we have, it's a mixture of hardscape, and then we have some raised planting beds that will allow us to introduce, you know, some softness. And again, we see that being much more utilized than the current plaza, because in effect, that's one of the ways you can process into court from the public parking area to the south. So there's improvements up there. We, we're also doing landscape around the perimeter of the entire site, and we're doing some additional improvements along 10th Street. Dragonfly Trail comes through, that's maintained. We're building some defensible kind of barriers so that vehicular traffic is prevented from approaching the courthouse itself. And we're also dealing with stormwater, so we're collecting, we have some inlets and green area along that front as well. There's upgrades on lighting and incorporating some of the memorials within those, both those areas on the front on 10th as well as in the plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
Do you know what the, and maybe this is a, well, first of all, can you, can you explain, there's a buzzword around about value engineering, can you kind of explain what value engineering means for the public? Because some people are concerned that, at least some of my constituents are concerned that value engineering means that we are cutting corners or making things with cheaper costs. Can you just kind of explain that for the public?
You might get different answers from the article, because, no, it, it often has a negative association. But I would tell you that there's, there's a threshold for this, this level of building. If you're going to build a 50 to 100-year building, you can't cut corners. So we have maintained a quality level to ensure, first of all, safety and security was, is untouched. The kinds of things that we did, it references back, you know, the, the strategy of repurposing the wings, taking advantage of the parking, and building the new footprint in the, in the portion of property that was left to the north, that is an example of value engineering. So we basically had the same square footage, but a different solution, and that engineering created a value that reduced the price significantly. So that's an example of, of the kind of things, and we do those on micro scales as well. There are issues in building systems, we look at the locations of, you know, where the, where the pumps are relative to the cooling towers and those kind of things. We haven't talked much today, but there is a team of design assist partners that's working with their design team. We have weekly calls, we are dissecting the building envelope, all the building MEP systems, and doing those kinds of detailed micro value engineering exercises to ensure that we're still getting the same performance, but doing it for a more efficient price.
And my other question, and maybe city manager can answer it better, since it's not an engineering question. We, at the stakeholder meeting, it was, it was brought up that there were going to be three different, well, two, two and a half, three different types of entry into the building, one off of, one off of 10th and one off of 9th, and then at another, at the parking lot level, I believe. And do we have a plan right now, how we're going to provide security for that, since if we're looking at the, the government center right now, we have very similar, the same setup with a, with a courtyard and the potential for an entrance there, but we don't use that entrance because we don't have enough staff to, or maybe it's a security risk to man that entrance, and so we're going underneath by the parking garage there? Is there a plan to, and do we have the staff to man those, those three entries?
So what, this image is a depiction of that common lobby space that does connect those three points of arrival. So imagine you have just walked in off of 10th Street, that's your viewpoint right now. What you see in the background there are the two levels, one is at grade that allows people to come off of first, and they can come into the building at grade. And then off, if you come in off the plaza, then that's the upper level that comes down the stairs. And we're collecting everybody in a single lobby that's contained and controlled, and you can't go anywhere except through screening from that point. The challenge in the current building is that the, you know, the elevators are in the center, and so we get people coming from both sides, and you'd have to duplicate. In this case, we don't. We have a single point of check, which you see at the bar far right, and so when people come in, we have a security station in the, in the lobby that can monitor all those entrances. We, we collect everybody in one place, and then they filter in through the security checkpoint and screening.
So there, so there's a separate security checkpoint and screening from there? So instead of like, right now, when we come through the government center, you empty your pockets?
Oh, the first thing you do, you walk through the door. Here, this is kind of a pre, pre-reception, so you don't go through screen until you move down the hall to, and that, but you don't have access to any of the rest of the building from, from the lobby. So we're giving you a, you know, this arrival, and then you move.
Basically a foyer?
Correct.
Ryan, you have.
Well, and, and I just wanted to add, in conversations with the sheriff, you know, the inmate or in custody delivery and distribution through the building of the new building should make his operations during court and, you know, in recess is much more efficient because, you know, in the new building, there's holding cells distributed adjacent to each courtroom. You know, now if he wants to detain somebody and put him back into holding, he's got to get on the single elevator and go back down to the fourth floor and put him in there. So there will be just some operational efficiencies by having. So there will be just some operational efficiencies by having additional holding, having additional elevators. That should make the building, his workload a little bit less. And in addition, as Doug was touching on, the current plan is for two lanes at the main entry, main security checkpoint. You know, two x-rays, two magnetometers, it's, you know, airport style going through. And again, the conversation is, you know, those won't be staffed, both lanes won't be staffed all the time. But in the mornings, especially on Monday, when 300 jurors are showing up, that he could staff both of those, get everybody in and out a lot more efficiently.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're giving the people a, a place to queue inside out of the rain before they, you know, in the event there is a kind of a backup as well.
All right, councillor Davis?
Yeah, I want to go back to the enhanced landscape side of the trees that you'll be putting on the property. They'll be six, six-inch diameter and larger, right?
So I, I honestly don't know the, the answer to the trees. We have limitations on what we can put on top of the plaza because, from structural concern. Now, there are some existing and we do have some capacity, but I don't, I don't honestly know the specifics. Relative to the perimeter, yeah, I think we have bigger species in the areas where we're playing, we're, we're going to plant new trees in that, in that.
I mean, that's one important matter, Mr. City Manager, that we make sure that happens. We don't need a bunch of two-inch caliber trees out there on a building like the, a project like this, okay? Just asking, but the.
Let me confirm that.
Councillor Garrett's question about, let me just clarification. Did you say that the FF and E and setup and delivery, all that stuff is in this construction number?
No, sir. Not in the construction number.
It's in this.
In the overall budget, construction's 198, the overall budget, is it 211 million dollar range?
So that, all that additional is FF and E and those kind of type of security and all those type of costs? Cameras, et cetera?
Yes, so the, the total budget would include design, FF and E, the bond issuance costs is included in our total budget. Demolition's part of the construction budget. All of those costs are included in our total budget. So when I came at the last meeting and talked about the budget and at the November 7th meeting and council approved the additional seven and a half million. So what we have is the 200 million from the sploß. And we have earned interest on those sploß bond proceeds that we've allocated to the budget. It can only be spent on the project or repaying the debt. So it's added to the budget along with the seven and a half million for the total project budget cost.
So that's where, that's where the funds are coming from to cover this cost?
Yes, that's part of the total.
So we're not using any additional at all, based on the project with the bonds? Now, since you're here.
Yes, sir.
You're in front of us, you're touching on a subject that I want to touch on today about the IRS regulations. I, I don't know if that's been explained to everybody real well, a lot of people don't understand that. But can you touch on that and what that means? And if you lose that interest earned right now? I mean, right now, the city, it's my understanding that it was very wise, very prudent, very wise to go ahead and underwrite those bonds because you did it before the inflationary period in the economy took in and you got money for 1.5%. I mean, that's what the city borrowed money for, 1.5%, 200 million. A hundred and fifty million, your additional, you're going to go out further down the project, which is spaced out, which is wise. And you'll borrow another 50 million, take out another addition to the bonds. But under the IRS regulations, if you can't do that, can you just kind of cover that whole sphere of what happens, the impact on that?
Sure, so I kind of covered this.
In the time, the timeframe we're dealing with?
Right, I kind of covered this briefly on November 7th. But when, since we borrowed the money at one and a half percent, it restricts us from earning interest higher than one and a half percent. So the Georgia Fund One is currently paying over 5%. So any funds that we accumulate in interest over the one and a half percent has to be rebated to the IRS. We are not including those funds in our budget, those are set aside. Anything over one and a half percent is not going to be spent on the project because at the end of five years, we will have to rebate that to the IRS. And it's just market conditions, right? We borrowed at one and a half, you're earning a whole lot more on your savings account, we're earning a lot more. So those funds will be rebated to the IRS. Now, when we get down to the second series, the additional 50 million, it'll have those same parameters that you have. You have certain expenditures that you need to make within a certain period of time. But anything over that one and a half percent will then be rebated. But if we borrow the second series at three and a half percent and we don't earn over three, three and a half percent, then we would be able to ma- maintain that interest.
And use it, and use it on the project without having to raise or find additional funds?
That is correct.
So what is the, what is the timeline on the requirements and regulations there with the, with the IRS?
So our arbitrage requirements to refund those funds comes after the five-year period. But in our tax-exempt requirements is where it comes in. You can't borrow money and earn more interest and otherwise you lose your tax-exempt. And therefore, we have to rebate those funds. So there is a timeline that says if you expend all your funds within 18 months, you're not subject to arbitrage. But we're past that period, so we'll have to rebate those funds.
Well, we, we borrowed that money when, how long ago? The city took out the bonds, it's almost two years?
It's, it's been close to two years.
So we're right up against some of those deadlines or timelines and we're losing that. The longer you wait, you'll lose that, you'll lose that interest based on the IRS regulations. And then it becomes, you're essentially paying debt service at that point.
Well, we're paying debt.
And that becomes part, that becomes part of the project.
Right, well, we're paying debt service already.
But you're offsetting it.
We're paying debt service on the sploß proceeds that are coming in. The first commitment that we have is to pay the annual debt service payments. So those are coming out of the sploß proceeds. The bond proceeds are separated in a separate fund accounted for separately. And that interest over one and a half percent is being maintained in the bond proceeds fund that will eventually be rebated to IRS.
Well, be prepared, when these guys finish, I want you to come back and talk about some of those numbers as a whole. And lump sum the impact, you, you follow me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to let them finish.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Eric?
Yeah, is there, I, I got one last question. Y'all told, or shared this one, I think, a couple of years ago. How many, how many courthouses, courtrooms have, have y'all built, designed? See, because I, I don't know why I thought I heard 80 courthouses and 800 courtrooms.
Yeah, it's up to, I think it's 90 courthouses and number of courtrooms is, I think, I forgot, 500.
Okay, I'm just curious. Because I, I remember somebody asking about the, the experience. And I was a little surprised to hear it was that many that you guys have done. All right, doesn't appear to be any more questions.
And so I think the council wants the deputy city manager to come back and, but, but I, I'm glad you brought up the conversation about IRS. Because when, you know, when it's time for arbitrage, people tend to get excited that we are asking you to pay the IRS. And so we do want them to remember what she just explained about arbitrage. But Deputy City Manager Hodge, I think. Yeah.
We're done. One, one other point, councillor Davis. Within the budget, Ryan reminded us of this, we do have the AV for the courtrooms and the one-year license for the cameras that are part of the budget. So the audiovisual, the security and the one-year license are part of the overall budget.
Councillor.
Deputy City Manager Hodge, thank you, I didn't know it was going to be so soon. Okay, I know that we've been presented several options. In my mind, there's been four options of potential what can be done. And all those came with a price tag at one point in time. And specifically to the site, related to the site, the, I think we only really have one or two options, maybe. But the options that were there were extremely, if I can remember, they were right at 300 million, the north of 300 million. Which like councillor Kogle talked, that's how it kicked in the value engineer because the council said, we can't do that. We cannot, we cannot spend that kind of money. If we did, we only got X by referendum, mandate by representative, referendum that was voted on by the citizens. And then the only other recourse you have would go back to raise the millage and the debt service to take out that additional, potentially 100 million plus, that would raise the property taxes on everybody in the city. Am I, am I right on that?
So there were really two options. The original.
On the site.
Right, the original intent of the sploß was 400 million. So if the original project for the judicial center and the government center is what came in, over 300 million. And that's when the directive was to determine the judicial center budget at 200 million, what could we do? And so that's where the conversation started about, could we pull out city administration? What options do we have for city administration? And so the city hall with the purchase of the Sinovus Building was done at no additional impact to the taxpayer because that was done within the millage that we were already levying. So that pulled that portion out of that original budget. Then we also started looking at the sheriff's administration. Because the cost per square foot in a judicial center far exceeds the cost of square footage in a, just a regular office building. So that was another portion that we pulled out. We purchased the Tesis Building and expended $16 million. So those things got us down below that $200 million mark, which was the directive from council. So that the sploß bond, or the sploß, when it was issued at 400 million, had 200 million for the judicial center, but also provided $200 million for all the other projects that were requested from the citizens to be done in parks and rec and public safety and roads and infrastructure. So by doing those things, we saved a lot of funds by doing the city hall and by doing the sheriff's building, providing that there's 200 million for all these other projects that needed to be done and still produce the judicial center and meet the programming that was required originally for all those offices to relocate, to be in the same building, to provide the courtroom space. And then council, again, provided an additional seven and a half million to the project, which provided the shelf space that we'll need for the future. So there were a lot of steps that got us to this point.
So on the, on the impacts, so you got construction, the cost of construction, and you got the, the, dealing with the financing, which is the bond obligation that you got over here that you're paying interest on daily. At that level of, of, of financing and then all the other issues that may go along with that. You've got, you know, I mean, you've got fees, you've got soft costs, you've got all kinds of things. To this day, to this day, how much can you tell me, how much have we already spent? How much are we obligated to? How much are we going to be invoiced? I know when this thing, if you change course with this building, they're going to bill you 100% for architectural fees and then any of the other associated costs. Can we, what would that number look like? And then add the financing, uh, uh, impact to that? And what would that number be of what we have spent to date? Somewhere around what we have already and what we're obligated for, and we may not have paid it today. But I know there's going to be some bills out there coming real soon on this. And what, can you give the citizens an idea of what that number is?
Just on the judicial center?
Uh, you mix those two, yes. The construction side and the, and the, the bonds. Those are the two things that you're dealing with here.
So right now, we are committed probably 12, 13? 13 million we're committed for at this point.
And it could be higher, is that including the bond side and, okay, well, if you don't, if you fail to meet the IRS obligations, is that number going to go higher?
It would, that, that does not include anything to do with the financing side. That's what our commitments are for the construction design of the judicial center, is over 13 million.
So then, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that number right there that you've already used, that number is gone. I mean, it's gone, you've already spent that money.
We spent it all, we've obligated at least 13 million.
But you're going to have to spend it. You, you, you're going to have to spend it even if you stop in your tracks and go, come up with another plan, am I right?
We would, yes, we would lose most of that.
All right, well.
If we started.
Didn't it change course all over again and go back to the bond underwriters? You're going to have to pay all that money back, aren't you?
We would, we would go through a process with that, depending on what we did. Now, if we built another judicial center as opposed to this one, I'll have to defer to legal on what our requirements would be for that.
I guess I'm getting to the impact, that would be, in my mind, that would be times two. You spend, you gotta, you gotta satisfy the bond, pay that money back. Spend a dollar, you spend, you, you borrow a dollar, you spend it, and then you got to go back and pay a dollar, that's $2. So that's times two. So I'm looking at somewhere around $30 million. $30 million, and if you come up, the impact, if you change the decision on the course you're going, you don't get that money back.
No, you would not get those.
That money basically, and pardon my French here, but that, that money goes down the toilet. Am I seeing it right? And then you got to go back to the drawing board, which, you got to go back to the drawing board, which any other plan is going to require, this is a contractor, this is a contractor question, but any other plan at that point would pretty much require a scorched earth policy that you'd have to clear that whole site. Demo it, everything in order to build anything new. Is that? And then you will get into suitable soil issues, right? There you will. But, and then you're back at an option of close to 300-plus million dollars based on the market or whatever those costs are that are going to be real time as you delay. Am I missing anything? So where do you come up with that extra money to cover the cost? To give the additional funds to do anything different than what this plan has laid out?
Any additional funding would, either additional bond issue or which would require some debt service requirement, which would be a millage increase.
Which is a property tax increase.
Right.
Okay, I just want my point to be clear of the impact and what we're dealing with here. It's, it's, it's a serious issue not to be lightly taken. It's not, you know, at this point, at this point, the changes equate to tens of millions of dollars. And the citizens need to know that. And, I mean, that's really how we got to this point of where we're at today.
That's it?
Mayor, next, we've got Director Rosa Evans here with some consultants. Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, well, F on my agenda, mayor and council, is Amendment 15. And you heard them explain in detail the scope of work for Amendment 15. Includes traffic control, surrounding property, existing condition surveys, demolition of landscaping and hardscapes located north of the existing wings, demolition of existing speed ramps located north of the underground parking garage, installation of a new wall in the existing parking garage and mass excavation for the new eight-story building. And so Amendment 15 is, is early demolition, basically, in summary, and site work for the judicial center. And it's $5,916,826. And I do appreciate all of the questions from councillor Davis. We need to move the project forward and so we're asking your approval to move forward with these things I've noted.
Motion approves or second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve F. Any further discussion? Hearing now, Chris, can you cue it? Councillors, please, any votes? We're missing one more, and we got it. Okay, it's, it's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so next, I've got Metro Dalarat, premium service, micro transit, Uptown Golf Shuttle. Just an update to follow up on extensive conversation that we had regarding moving beyond the current three-fourths of a mile.
moving beyond the current three-fourths of a mile for, of, uh, regular routes for Dial Ride. And, um, and so, uh, this would introduce micro transit that would get us to some of those locations that you were concerned about, like the, uh, the Veterans Center, uh, the Driver's License Bureau and, and some other locations. And so I have Director, um, Evans here, and she's got consultants with her, and they're gonna update us and, um, and determine how we want to move forward with this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. So, um, as, as, as City Manager stated, he's given a brief overview. So by way of introduction of our presenters, uh, today, and as the City Manager said, um, at the request of a citizen who lived outside of the ADA paratransit service area, um, council did vote on August the eighth to extend the service area, the Dial Ride service area, for an additional three-quarters of a mile. And so with that, we wanted to make sure we engage the public and have public involvement in that. And so council voted on September twenty-six to bring on, uh, professionals, a team that could come in and look at our paratransit ADA service area and move us forward with it. So with that, Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associate, um, Incorporated joined us. And so we've been working closely with them over two months now. So, um, without further delay, I wanna ask, uh, Mr. Bill Schwartz with Nelson Nygaard to come and give us, he'll present to us.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
It's been a long day so far. My name is Bill Schwartz. I'm a principal with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates. And I'm a transportation planner, and I've been working in, uh, the field of ADA paratransit now for about fifteen years of my career. So, um, I'm going to give you an overview of the study, talks about ADA and demand response transportation briefly, then get into a discussion of what we looked at in terms of Metro's current Dial Ride service, the meet, the public meetings that we held in October, um, and then get into the meat of it, which is really the proposal for the premium service, what, what that would look like, how many people would use it, what it would cost, et cetera, and then we can have a discussion. Uh, we'll say that the micro transit piece is a second part of the conversation. We were asked to talk about that. And, um, so we'll give you a briefing on that, but there's, uh, a longer conversation that could take quite a bit of time. So we'll, but we will stop after the premium service discussion and then see, uh, see how much time you'll have for discussing the next part. So, um, so right now, um, you operate Dial Ride, um, service, uh, let me just see if I can get out of this. Okay. Okay. For eligible riders who, whose disability prevents them basically from getting to the bus stop or from riding the bus. This is a requirement of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The requirement is to provide that service within three-quarters of a mile of bus routes. And it's an origin-todestination service as opposed to like, if you wanna get from point A to point B, the service will take you to point A to point B. And what it, it can vary. Sometimes it requires assistance to the curb, to the door. Sometimes somebody can get out of the vehicle right at, right at the location. As Ms. Parks just said, you had a rider appear before you, um, to, uh, request services outside of the three-quarters of a mile, um, and then voted to expand to mile and a half, which is exceeding the ADA requirements. Um, and then you engaged us to do this study. The study itself is to basically take a look first at the current service. In, importantly, what is Dial Ride's capacity right now to meet the ADA requirements? And what is it likely to be going forward? To ask for public input, um, to find out where people really wanna travel to. Because sometimes it isn't just a matter of just drawing a line in, in, uh, in every direction because not everybody wants to go in each direction. Estimate the demand and costs and then make some recommendations about how to deliver it while continuing to comply with the requirements for ADA. So, um, just briefly, so because not everybody understands the difference here. Demand response transportation essentially is a flexible service, meaning that it responds to where people wanna go. So when you summon a cab or book a shuttle to take you to the airport or whatever, that's a demand response transportation service. And the big difference is that a fixed route transportation service operates on the same roads according to a schedule. You can plan for it's when it's gonna come by the bus stop and so forth. Flexible transportation, demand response transportation is typically more costly to deliver than fixed route bus service. And this is a very important point when we start talking about micro transit because you have a driver operating a vehicle and traveling, maybe carrying one or two people at a time as opposed to a bus that can carry fifty people at a time. So inherently, the, the operating cost can be higher. You request a trip, uh, previously you had to call. The big advance, I'd say, which has got a lot of people excited about micro transit, is that you can use a smartphone or computer to summon a trip. And you can even watch the vehicle coming towards you, and a lot of people are really interested in that. And as I mentioned, the different types of demand response transportation. And I wanna emphasize demand response because that is not always the same as on-demand. On-demand is that Lyft or Uber experience when you just push a button and try to get your trip. Demand response is the important thing here that I would like to emphasize because for many people, getting a trip is more important. It's the most important thing, I should say. Being able to summon it quickly is great, but a lot of people who don't have a, a vehicle being able to get picked up and know that they're gonna get that trip is the most important thing. So that means sometimes you, you have some reservation requirements for that. So you have taxi cabs, limos, Lyft, Uber, et cetera, fall into that category of for hire. It's basically private service. And then you have different types of shuttles, which include micro transit, which, and I'm gonna get into that later. Then, of course, there's Dial Ride, which is a complement for ADA paratransit, and then another one might be a premium service. So, in terms of what we're talking about for Dial Ride, this is what, what is referred to in the regulations as a safety net. It's not for everybody. It is for people whose disabilities prevent them from getting to or from the bus stop or riding the bus itself. And it was designed when the regulations, when the ADA was passed in nineteen ninety, the regulations that were developed, the conception of this was that we wanna be able to provide a safety net for people who otherwise would not be able, um, get access to bus service by doing this. Now, at the time that the ADA was passed, most bus service, most buses were not wheelchair accessible. Now, they're all accessible. The entire metro fixed route fleet is accessible. And obviously, if you have accessible paths, sidewalks and ramps and so forth to connect to the bus, that is a big benefit. To use the service, one must apply for it. And you must be determined to be ADA paratransit eligible. And we'll be talking momentarily about what's happening with the number of people that are applying for that service. Um, and, and of course, um, the service areas within three-quarters of a mile. So if you, once you have your eligibility, you can request a trip anywhere within three-quarters of a mile of the bus routes today. And that, that limit is really just as the same time the buses are operating. Some of the requirements, as I was mentioning a moment ago about this demand response, is that you need to contact Metro, um, at least the day before you're traveling. There's no same-day service, except if somebody is running late at their doctor's appointment. They can call the, call the number and say, hey, I can't, I can't make that three o'clock pickup. I'm, I'm, I'll call you when the doctor's appointment's over. That's a same-day service, but that's not a same-day reservation. That's a, what we call a will call or a change trip. Metro may negotiate the time that they pick up the rider within certain limits, but you have to accommodate all the next-day trip requests. The regulations allow for an occasional situation where you can't, but any kind of pattern where you're doing that is prohibited. And, um, so therefore, if you need to provide more service to accommodate the demand, you have to add the service capacity. As I mentioned before, it's origin-todestination, which is either curb-to-curb or door, door-to-door, depending on how much assistance somebody needs. And as I meant, and, and any type of capacity constraint is prohibited in the regulations. So the, um, the, the regulations and some of the discussion that is provided by the agencies that oversee this is that anything operated beyond the three-quarters of a mile is known as a form of premium service, which, which is the title of, of the study that we're doing. So a little bit about how Dial Ride, um, operates today at Metro. They have a, a service cost that are about one point one six five million in the last fiscal year. The vehicles, um, that they use and the operators that drive or the drivers that drive those vehicles are separate from the fixed route. But the people who supervise them in the field, who maintain the vehicles, who ensure that everything is safe and that they train the drivers and manage the whole team, those are shared resources with fixed route. And what we've determined and what staff has told us is that while the current number of people that they have appear to us to be adequate to meet their current demand, um, sometimes, whether it's a, a, a daily surge, a minute, there's certain times of the week, certain times of the month, uh, when trip demand goes higher. Again, you have to respond to the demand, so sometimes, um, it does present staffing challenges. And that's also the situation if they have people who are, um, taking the day off. So, um, the way they're staffed today, and this is very important because we'll be getting into staffing in a few minutes, is that one Dial Ride vehicle operator, who's, you know, who's trained to drive a vehicle and used to drive a vehicle most of the time, um, handles reservations and scheduling, is available to do some Saturday service. But this is already reducing the number of people that are available to operate the vehicles today. When they have those surges that I mentioned before, um, the supervisors and managers, some of whom are here today, they drive the vehicles to cover the extra trips that come, come into demand or some, or somebody's out. I call this firefighter mode. I'm sure many of you who are in government, you've seen this other staff. You do what you have to do to get the job done, but it comes at a cost, right? Basically, you can't do your other tasks. You can't do your, you can't really analyze the data. You can't look at where you are with your trends. You can't do other supervisory responsibilities, and it increases the stress on your personnel. So we think that based on what we've learned and what we've discussed with the team, that any more demand in the service is not gonna be, uh, addressed with the current staffing levels. So, um, why? Why is that? What, what's happening to the demand? Well, you, you probably have heard before, but the basic statistics are that more people are applying for the ADA paratransit eligibility. Prior to COVID, Metro was receiving thirty or less applications per year. In the calendar year of twenty twenty-two, they received thirty-two, a little bit more than before. But so far this year, they've received seventy-two applications just in the first ten months. So, um, at the daily ridership for the demand that they're getting right now, about eighteen people per route is manageable. Uh, but before COVID, daily ridership was, um, sometimes over twenty passengers per route, which present, uh, put a lot of stress on the system. So we've, even without discussing the, uh, expanded service area, more staffing will be needed as growth continues over time.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't even notice that, Counselor Tucker, too. I'll get you just next. Counselor Thomas?
Do we know, um, what caused the, the large, uh, larger number? I mean, sixty more this year than, do we know what?
Is there, is there an answer as to why more people have applied for, for, um, this?
Yeah.
I don't know that we have, uh, a, uh, I don't know whether you asked, interviewed people who have, why, why they've, uh, applied for service when they didn't, but there are a number of reasons for typical growth in it, you know. The first one, of course, is always the aging population. That's just a trend. But why, why did it jump? Post, excuse me, post-COVID. People who were not traveling during that period, uh, there may, there may have been demand for the service, but people were reluctant to travel previously. And then suddenly they said, you know what? Now I, I, or there could be people in social service agencies that are recommending that they apply. Uh, I don't think there was any specific outreach to encourage more people or make people more aware of it. But obviously, more people are becoming more aware of it as we speak about it as well.
Do you know, uh, in other locations, are they seeing the same kind of increase?
So we have.
In other jurisdictions?
The answer is, uh, it really does depend. Not, I have not seen something like this, but it's, we're starting from a pretty low base. And so the, you know, doubling is, the, the, the number of applications may have been lower than it might have been in other places. So I, I can't say that it's a national trend or I've seen in others, other places. There are other, there are other instances where people, uh, might use the service and just, uh, you know, chose not to. I mean, sometimes what happens, I can tell the story. I got both of my parents to be eligible while they were still alive for paratransit where, where they lived in Rhode Island. And in both cases, my father never took a trip, my mother took it once. So you have people that do apply. As I said, it's a safety net. You might have a ride some of the time, or you might be able to take the trip on fixed route, but you wanna have the backup in case you can't make it because it's a little bit farther to get to the bus stop.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Counselor Tucker.
Yes, um, you're going further. I'm reading ahead where you were, um, the meetings held on October third and fifth, and, um, some of the topics included, um, serving the Brookstone area, providing direct access to the VA clinic, um, serve the Georgia Department of Driver Services, provide service for YMCA after eight P M., serve areas of new development to North, um, North Columbus, and add kiosks, kiosks to obtain fare cards at Walmart, Publix, et cetera. I think, um, one of my concerns is the, the actual ADA requirements are a minimum requirement. And if we're already transporting the individuals, why can't we drive just that mile and a half more? Why would that put a strain on the transportation? It seemed like it would just be a scheduling, um, that would need to be changed in order to, and I say this because the individual that we're talking about in Brookstone, he's like three houses up from the individuals that's, that is already being picked up. So that's where this actual presentation and questions came from, was a veteran who is disabled and literally lives three houses down from a individual that's already being picked up. So if you're already going a route, why can't you just do additional scheduling and add those factors in? I mean, we know that we can't pick up everyone based on the amount of employees that we have. Um, and we always talk about low ridership, you know, on our regular routes all the time. It just seems like it's some scheduling things that could actually occur that will benefit everybody, you know, to include us as the city with our scheduling, but also the individuals that need to be picked up.
Thank you for the question. I, the, there's quite a few things there, and I am gonna, um, explain how the service should be designed. But what I can try to, I think the, the key question is, why can't you just fill in the blank, right? Why can't you do this? And it's, um, it's not that you can't do it, it's just that you need sufficient resources to do it so that the people who are within the required service area are not, uh, uh, suffering the consequences of you doing that extra thing. So there's a solution that, uh, to address the need, but it doesn't, it's sort of this idea that you can't do it at the, at the, it's sort of like what I said about staffing. You, you, Robin Peter, Paul, you, in the case of ADA, it's not just a minimum service that you're supposed to do. It's that you have to do the minimum, and you cannot let the minimum suffer at the expense of something else. And so that's what I think is the, the key message. And I, I think what you'll see as I go through this is that we have come up with a plan for this that I, hopefully will address the questions.
So, so Bill, to that question, I, I just wanna be clear. So the three, so with all the Metro routes, you must do three-fourths of a mile from?
Each bus route.
From each bus route. You can do more, but you must do three-fourths of a mile. And so when I, I hear that question, can you go a little further than three-fourths of a mile for two clients on one route? Does that open you the door? That you've done it for that one? So if I call you from over here and say, come more than three-fourths of a mile, then you gotta determine, do I limit it to three or four blocks? Or are they gonna claim that you go to get that person? It doesn't matter whether it's three or four blocks. So you come and get me six or eight blocks. And if you don't, then I'm gonna write the F T A and I'm gonna file a complaint.
Yeah. That's a, a great example. And one of the things that I can mention is that I believe that partly in your, in, you know, one of the reasons that you, you have a rider today who's receiving service because you used to run fixed route that included the service area around that person's residence. And the individual who came before you said, I saw the van going past the street and assumed that this location was covered, which is why I moved there. And lo and behold, it's not. And so by not having it documented as a policy, you, you are subject to this kind of a, a, a request, and need to do a study and, and all of that. And I would say that for any policy, any, any decision that you make, and I'm going to get to that, it should be clear what's in and out, and what, what is, and how you're going to treat a new request that comes before you. But if you could, may I?
And I, and I'm sure you're going to get into it. I know what the, the ADA actually states, and the requirements, those minimum requirements. My question is, once we ensure that the individuals within those ADA requirements are, their needs are being met, is it possible to extend to a additional rider? It's almost like a priority. Like when you load at Delta, you one, two, three, four, five. That's your first priority. The second priority would be those individuals who are outside of the actual ADA minimum requirement. So we know that we have to get those individuals. But that second priority will be on a needs, as needed basis, meaning that after those individuals are taken care of, then we can actually extend it to the additional people. That's what I meant about scheduling.
Hundred percent could do that. And yes. I, I'm sorry to not answer directly. So, what, what we want to be able to say about this, the current service, is that as demand grows, right, and riders request more trips, you're going to need more resources to deliver that. And, but if you don't, right, and, or if the levels of ridership that the agency saw before pre, before COVID, you're going to see some challenges in on time performance, meaning you, you don't get to appointments on time. You spend more time on the vehicle. Service quality goes down. And very importantly, employee quality of life is impacted. You have people working more overtime. You have a, an increased level of stress. So, there's also some issues with the fleet. Basically, it's about really replacing it. The fleet that the, that you have right now is adequate, but you have some that are getting close to their, end of their useful life, which is five years and 150,000 miles. And ordering new vehicles takes time, and it's, it's, there's a backlog. So you can request permission to keep them longer, which might be something that one would ask about, but just know that your maintenance costs are going to go up. And right now, you don't have enough mechanics to work on your vehicles. So what I would say is that just be aware that that is a point of information in terms of your existing service. So to summarize the current service, applications are going up. You don't have enough staffing to accommodate your increased demand without premium service, or going to pick up the extra rider. I, I believe you need more data to be able to track that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And if you keep the fleet longer, you'll have more maintenance costs. You reviewed for me, for us, the, the public input that we received. So just briefly, we had two meetings. They were well attended. We heard, we heard some very specific locations, two of which are outside a mile and a half. That's what the point I want to make, that are, that brought us to really coming up with discussion of what our, the premium service proposal is. Sort of like, this is what you've been waiting for, and, and we're, we're, we're happy to be able to share this with you. As I mentioned, just as a sort of refresher, this is more for people who are reading this later. The service includes locations within three quarters of a mile of the bus routes. And the guidance from the Federal Transit Administration says that you may offer this premium service beyond three quarters of a mile, but you have to still ensure that you meet your ADA requirements, and that there's no capacity constraints on that service. So we've developed a recommended premium service area that is shown on this, on this map right here. The blue line represents the existing three quarters of a mile of dialer ride outside of the red lines, which are the fixed route bus, the bus routes. And you'll see a dashed line that represents the consolidated city-county boundary. So you'll also notice here that some of the blue goes beyond the county boundary, because it's, it's, that's a requirement. You have to provide the service unless you're prohibited from operating beyond that point by law. And so what the premium service area that we've identified is shaded in sort of that peach color. That's what we're calling the premium dialer ride service area. And that includes a mile and a half up to the edge of the line. So you'll see those little triangles in the southeast and southwest that kind of go up and just stop. But in the northerly direction, they go a mile and a half from the bus routes. And they add in two key locations, the VA clinic and driver services. Those are a little bit beyond the 1.5 miles. So because we heard about those in, in the public meetings, we added them in. So it's a little bit more than a mile and a half in some places, and a little bit less. And doing it this way, by the way, I've got, I did a project like this in Rhode Island. We're doing one in Buffalo and New York right now. This is the logical way to do it. So obviously, if you, if you draw it on a map, it creates something that is, something you can share, but it's not, it's not a set distance. It's a little bit different than that. So, what does this mean? It adds about a little over 13 square miles to the service area. And that was very important for us to be able to just understand how many more people would be served in that. So right now, the service area has about 160,000 residents, and the added service area includes about another 14,000 people. So based on the, the ridership levels that you have today, and where, where things are going, we've estimated that your additional service, if provided in that peach shaded area, is projected to add about 2,500 trips per year. Delivering this service will increase the number of hours that the vehicles are out on the road, and it'll, meaning somebody has to be behind the wheel, and will increase the number of miles that are driven. And so to meet the additional demand, we've estimated with staff input, city input, the additional operating resources that are recommended. This is on top of the current funding for, for Metro, and it would include the addition of three vehicle operators, one scheduler, and funding for fuel and maintenance, and other administrative costs, or a little bit over $270,000 per year. That would be the starting cost, of course, like everything that you've all dealt with in terms of your budgets, the numbers will grow over time. Then, the, as far as the fleet that I mentioned a little bit earlier, in terms of having to replace some of those vehicles, we believe that you're okay right now. But as you get into the fiscal year 2025, should be expanding the fleet during that time, maybe one or two vehicles. One of the things that we say here is that, I mentioned before, the need for data, is the need to be able to sort of track how this is going. So, we have some, Councilwoman Tucker, you mentioned a few minutes ago about setting priorities. So we come up with some recommended service policies for the council to consider, and we'd recommend adopting. These policies are that riders can request premium trips no more than a day before they travel, as opposed to a rider of the dialer ride service can ask for a trip longer in advance. And the reason is that when you make the request, you want to be able to have a guarantee of the trip, as opposed to calling up a few days in advance and somebody saying to you, well, I, I can't be sure until I know what my required demand is. The second one is that you offer a pickup time based on what capacity is available. So in the ADA, there's certain limits about when you ask for a trip, what you, what the, what Metro can say, I can pick you up at this time or that time. But in non-ADA or premium, you can say, well, I can't pick you up at 8:30, but I can pick you up at, at, you know, 9:45. Would that be okay? You can, you, excuse me, you can work for that. So that's, that's another way of prioritizing. And then if there's no space available the day before, what you can do is put premium trips onto a waiting list, meaning like, I can't pick you up, I can't, I can't guarantee you right now, I'll put you on the waiting list. And typically, what happens is people cancel their trips and space opens up. But it's, this is a sort of a way of setting some, some priorities, so that you do not run up against the, the, the constraints that I mentioned before. We recommend that the fares be the same for both services initially, and that, as I said before, that you receive and adopt formal policies about what the premium service prioritization steps would be, where it would go, et cetera, and publish them in the rider guide. And that kind of helps you in case, as city manager was asking, you, you have it clearly defined what is included and what is not included in the service. So, I want to just make a few final comments about premium service considerations, and then we can open it up for any questions you have before I get into microtransit. And I apologize, there's a typo on the first point, which is a big one. Expanding the service may not result in immediate rider growth. It says it might. I apologize for that. Trip, but read the second half of it, since trips would begin to increase. In other words, what we're saying is, you, you authorize it, the funding, you, you come up with a plan for implementation, you're not going to see the ridership tomorrow be a big number, but it, it will grow over time. The second thing is that to get to that point, to be able to track it, and to know how you're doing, we feel, feel there's a need for better data and better metrics to show the demand, to show what's happening in terms of your costs, and any other challenges that you're having. Because we think that you may need even more people to operate the program. And that you may need to revise the policies once you better understand the demand. It may be a situation where there's interest in going to a place that's a little bit harder to serve because of the traffic patterns and so forth. But these are some really important considerations to be able to get to it. I want to just make one more. So, the, summarizing it, the recommendation is that you expand your service area to a mile and a half of your bus routes within the city-county consolidated boundary, and include the two locations of driver services and the VA clinic. You prioritize, as you were saying, delivering dialer ride within the ADA service area without capacity constraints. You adopt premium service policies that ensure that you continue to comply with the ADA. And you increase the funding by at least 270,000 to add three operators and one scheduler, and cover fuel, maintenance, and related costs. And finally, the next, next last plan to add two new vehicles, and collect data and monitor demand to ensure that your services are adequate and funding.
Excuse me just a second. I'm sorry. We've got a counselor, Counselor Begley?
So, I'm assuming the reason you don't see a big uptick in rider growth is because most of the people who are interested in this service have probably self-selected into regions that have service currently. And so the, by expanding it, you're expanding the area where people aren't used to taking it. So-